Get Heavy Podcast, hosted by Craig Casamas and John Shimer.
What's up guys? Welcome to Get Heavy Podcast. Today's episode is sponsored by Fatty Vegan 805. It is the new vegan restaurant that Shimer, the co-host of this podcast, has opened with his lovely wife and their friend Sean, who is an incredible chef. All vegan punk rock junk food and beer. I had, I had some food from it the other day. It was amazing. I'm not a vegan. I love meat, but also I love food more. So if you like delicious food, go check it out. They got tacos and sandwiches and nachos and pizza and beer specialty drinks. All you'd want, all you can desire. All of your dreams will come true if you show up at 3255 South Borcher Drive, Ventura, California. You can follow them on all social media sites at Fatty Vegan 805. Go ahead and check it out. Support is appreciated. Also, you can check out our Patreon page. A $1 a month gets you early access to these episodes. It gets you bonus content in the higher tiers, gets you more options. So you can pay up to 10, 20 bucks a month if you really love us that much. But $1 a month just gets you in the door. So you get these episodes a couple of days early and some bonus content that gets recorded before and after. Also, all the old podcasts are going to be getting uploaded there as well. And then higher tier stuff, you get discounts on merch, all kinds of good stuff like that. So check it out. Get Patreon.com slash Get Heavy Podcast and you can also purchase our masks that are for sale right now at the Big Cartel page. That is GetHeavyPodcast.BigCartel.com. And check that out. Well, free local delivery. If you want it shipped, you can get it shipped. So we've got plenty of masks and socks still. This shit is not ending anytime soon. So if you want a stylish design on your mug, go ahead and check it out. So today's episode is something kind of interesting. We're calling it a swap cast. We had the pleasure of being invited on the Sonic City Council Podcast. These are two guys out of the Antelope Valley, musicians, touring musicians, studio musicians that kind of have the same idea that we do. They just want to talk to their friends and, and check up on life and have some good conversations and some good times. It was a pleasure to be on. So if you want to rate, follow, review, you know, all that stuff, the Sonic City Council. Go ahead. The support is much appreciated. Enjoy the episode.
Part of me wanting to do one of this, one of these podcasts is like, I gotta have a buddy that will handle the technical stuff so I don't pull my hair out. And Max is a saving grace and he's, you know, he's awesome.
I need a max. I'm over here. Shimer is the glitz. I'm the fucking.
I'm like, hey man, I'll be, I'll be there. Alright.
Shimer's the sex appeal of the group.
I don't know, man. Look at that mustache.
Your beard is making me sad that mine's gone now.
I know. I thought I'd be like beard to beard with you, dog. I was like, what?
20 years. I had, I had a huge one for 20 years. You know, just decided to see my face before I get old, you know what I mean? 18 years old, I graduated high school with a beard.
Oh, fuck yeah.
Yeah, fair enough, man. Fair enough.
That's how you become a man. I graduated high school, had a beard and shit. That's what's up.
Yeah. That's my one actual attribute is that I can grow a fucking serious beard.
That's, that's the only talent you need in this life, man.
So, so this is, so this is the homie Craig. We do the Get Heavy Podcast.
Yes.
We've been, we've been doing it. Like we took like, what, a year, a year off, a year and a half off? We took a year and a half off.
Yeah.
But I would say if you add it all together, we did it for like two years, you know, or, you know. We put out almost 50 episodes this year, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We had 40 episodes this year.
Forty episodes, yeah.
I mean, it all started with the Corona, you know, breakdown. We, we stopped. I had a, I, my wife was pregnant. I was having another kid, figuring out my job and career. You know, and Shimer had, was on tour constantly, you know what I mean? So, you know, it just, it is what I.
And that was the birth of our podcast too. You know, me and Davey, you know, he's a, you know, music teacher and, you know, I'm going on the road and teching and playing in bands as well. So this was a perfect time to, this is something we had talked about doing for a while and it just, it all came together. So it was one of the positive aspects of all this and nice having something on the calendar to do, you know? It's like, oh, hey, it's like, you know, besides just, oh, how am I gonna make ends meet? It's like, oh, hey, I can get together and hang out and talk music with my buddies. Let's do it.
Yeah.
What was, what, what was, what was your guys' first guest on the podcast? I love this. We can like podcast back and forth. It's fun right now.
We're, we're officially in the swap cast, so let's do it.
Yeah, we're in the swap cast. We're the swap cast. Did, did, yeah, was, was your guys' first podcast with a guest or did you guys just do it yourselves?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So as, as Davey likes to put it, that I was getting my friends, you know, the whole first list of guests we had was all people I knew and then eventually became people that both of him and I knew. But it was, I do these tech gigs for the Rock and Roll Fantasy Camp. And basically that's a bunch of people that want to get together and hang out and play with rock stars for a weekend. And they have a whole technical crew to make sure nothing catches on fire, like all the amps are working and the PAs are working. And so one of the guys I met through that played guitar with Lou Gramm of Foreigner and then plays with a bunch of other bands and does session work. And he's originally from New York, but he's a Nashville guy now and his name is Michael Sterto. And he's just like, he's one of those guys you meet music business wise that is like not pretentious and wants to help people out and just has a really good heart. And was one of the first people I asked to do it and he said yes. And we just talked music and 80s metal and, you know, playing guitar and growing up and jamming in the garage. So it was, it was a blast, man. What about you guys?
Nice. Yeah. What, um, when, when we first, when we first did it, we, we would meet at my old office. Right? Yeah. We'd meet at my old office and it, from the first wave of podcasts that we did, one of my favorite episodes was we did mushrooms. And then just, and just recorded a podcast.
Yep. It's like your old pirate radio station, man. That's awesome.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Had that feel.
It did have that feel. It was, it was pretty fun. But yeah, doing the mushrooms. And then with this one, it was just like, we, we did it ourselves the first couple of times. I have such a bad memory. That's why everything's recorded, so I don't have to remember it.
Right.
I don't know if you know this, but Shimer's stoned a lot, so. Marijuana affects the memory. Yeah, I think I did it by ourselves. You know what I mean? By ourselves. But between me and John, I mean, John obviously knows a plethora of people that are, you know, much more famous than me. But I got an extensive music background and that was the whole goal of our podcast is just basically what I'm really interested in is like, you know, people that go out playing punk and metal and all that stuff. And, you know, if you have these DIY, you know, ethics that you use to, if you're able to book your own shows and bands and tours, you know, then you have these, you have this unique skillset that sets you apart from a lot of people. And I like to talk to people that have used that skillset to, you know, further their lives in different ways, whether it's art or even business or, you know, whatever. So that, that always interests me. And, you know, this, this whole genre of people has, and pretty incredible stories about what they do and how they do it. So I'm, you know, I'm generally just interested in people, you know, people's stories and stuff, but.
Yeah, it's been, it's been fun. We just like.
Trail into Corona, you know?
No, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, the first, the first like 13, 15 episodes, we called like the Corona Chronicles. You know, so it was like, you know, it was that. And then like after a while, we were just like, fucking Corona's not gonna end. This is old. Stop talking about this. God, I'm trying to exist here. You know what I mean? Like, fuck, you know?
I feel, yeah, I feel you on that, man. I went back and I watched the first episode you guys did. And I went and watched the latest one. At the time we're recording this, the latest one with the guitarist from Strung Out.
Yeah, Jake.
Yeah. So it was, it was really interesting just seeing the contrast of that and just seeing how you guys approached talking, you know? And it was literally just like hanging out with your buddies and talking music and life. And that's kind of what we are doing with this in a way. Like the whole point of us wanting to start this was to have like, ask questions and a conversation about how creative people think the way they do or people that work in a creative field and like really understand that perspective. Because me and Davey, you know, we've gigged together and we, you know, one, one thing we love is just hanging out after shows and talking music or just life until like late into the night. And it's like, why can't we have a podcast where we can just talk about anything we want in like that creative field? And that's how it started. And, you know, I know Davey, like when you came to me, that was kind of your goal with it, right?
Yeah, more or less, for sure. Yeah. Um, yeah, getting into the process of like, always been fascinated with different musicians, like all genres of music and like, how do you, if you didn't learn the way I learned to play, like how the hell did you learn it? Like, cause I don't even understand how the fuck I'm doing what I'm doing. I would love to know your story, you know? And everyone's is so unique. So that's really like the, I saw some of that reflected in Jesse's writing in, in the Antelope Valley Press up here. The article, the weekly column is what they're called. He's been doing that for a couple of years now. And every time I read one, I was just like, that's really the tenor of the shit I want to be doing when it comes to talking to people about stuff. So I kept bugging him until he had no job because of coronavirus. And he said, okay. That's all that problem. I didn't start coronavirus, but I'm rolling with that bitch, I'll tell you.
But I'm rolling, I'm rolling with that motherfucker.
That's right.
I always find it being like such, I always find it being so, it's always so shocking to me that you, you, when you start to really talk to people about playing music and stuff. Apparently no one has any fucking clue what they're doing. You know what I mean? Like, I bring countless albums at this point, you know, countless songs. And if you were to throw one at me right now, I would, it would take me a minute, you know what I mean, to figure out what in God's name I was doing, you know what I mean? But you meet musicians like Jake, you know, and Strung Out, who is a shredder. I mean, this guy, you know, he practices and warms up by playing Metallica solos and shit. And it's like, not me, dude. Like I can't, I'm not the dude that's going to be able to bust out a Pink Floyd cover or a fucking, you know, I love it, you know? But I'm just, my brain isn't wired that way. I'm not interested in learning a ton of other music, you know? It's just, it's always been a weird creative force, but the more people that you talk to, the, you realize they're a lot like us. Like they, you know, I have a basic knowledge of things and that's about as far as it goes. And whatever, whatever riff sounds good, sounds good, you know? It's really, it's so weird, you know, like, you, the times, like you listen to bands like from the seventies and, you know, like your Zeppelins and all that shit. And those guys are immaculate players. I mean, above and beyond what we probably all are, you know? But there's a whole generation of musicians that have just fucking grinded and created killer music, you know what I mean?
They have, they have adapted from Led Zeppelin.
We were, we were talking about that earlier. One of my favorite John Shimer quotes is adapt or die. And then added to, you know, you're not getting anywhere if you just listen to Led Zeppelin your whole life. I, whatever was popular in high school, you know, whatever you grew up on. For me, that would be like, I was a huge, still am, but a huge system of a down fan being in high school and through middle school. That was my shit. And I love them, but like, I don't listen to them nearly as much as when I was a kid because that stuff is so, I've listened to it so much that like, I don't want to be that guy in a bubble either. And same with all the other metal bands I listened to. And now I'm on, you know, hip hop, jazz, funk, you know, anything that I, you know, come across that I could enjoy and.
You ever listen to Bad Bad Not Good?
I have.
That's my shit. I sit there and just write out the dude's basslines.
Yeah. Have you, have you listened to that record that they did with Ghostface?
Fuck yeah, bro.
Yeah. I got that shit on gold. I got that shit on gold vinyl, dog.
Nice, dude. No, Ghostface, I've been a fan for so long. That's how I got into it. That's, oh, I love, I go back to Wu-Tang and all that shit. Oh.
Yeah.
Don't get me started on, on that.
There's a, there's a great video of them jamming with Bootsy Collins in his Boot Cave Studio in Ohio. And it's, I forget what company put it on, but basically it was sort of this like old meets new kind of vibe. And the way they're hitting it off and like they're jamming, he's like the producer guy and they're playing in a room and he's bringing this stuff out of them that they normally wouldn't play. And it's super fascinating because you just see this like, it doesn't matter where you're coming from. They're both equally in love with music. And you just see this like passion come out. That's awesome. It's like, it's super cool if you want to YouTube that. That's a, that's a great one.
I'll check it out. Check it out. So, but yeah, but, but our podcast, it's been good, man. I, I like our consistency. Craig makes sure as we stay on it, which is good because I enjoy the consistency. It's like, we gotta get it out like that. And we've had some, we've had some good fun conversations with people. As I said, we just like to talk with them, just chit chat.
I got a question about the podcast.
Go for it.
Was that really Joe Exotic? But I heard Chris' voice and I was like, yo, I think this motherfucker is Joe Exotic.
Oh my god, that shit was so. White trash genetic connection, you know what I mean? I was shocked how fast, I was shocked at how fast I could get there.
See Craig's, Craig's actually, see Craig's actually from Trona. He was actually born with that mustache.
Oh, holy shit.
He tried to shave off, he basically shaved his, he shaved his beard and he tried to shave that off, but it wouldn't come off because of genetics.
Wow.
It has to. It was fierce when I was a kid, but now it's good. No, man, I was born out in the desert. I'm a fucking desert rat, you know what I mean? I grew up in Trona and, and Rosemond, you know, about 12 years old. You know what I mean? Yeah. So, you know, and me and Shimer had, I hadn't met him until he moved to Ventura. And then we were, as soon as we met, it was like, oh yeah, cool. We're fucking cool.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this, that Joe Exotic thing is, I was, I was totally surprised at how fast I really felt like Joe Exotic. I mean, for about two fucking days, I was, I mean, I annoyed the living shit out of my whole entire family. Pulling guns out on the family, fucking aiming crossbows at them, fucking. Had the kids running from, running from shit.
You start, starting the podcast, welcome to number Get Heavy, volume 47 of Carol Sucks.
No, he's, he's so hard. He's like, that fucking Carol Baskin. I was like, that really sounds like Joe. And I was like, and he kept going. I was like, this does, that's, that was, it was really, it was fun. Very fun. Had me going for a cool minute.
Yeah. Yeah. It was, it was good. So we. I actually, I, so I, I teach, I teach construct, like I teach how to run heavy equipment.
Okay.
And so with, with, I'm in like local 12 operators, but I work for my unit. Anyway, this is all building up to, so we've been doing our instruction online on Zoom, which is, it's fucking weird to teach how to run equipment online. It's impossible. It's like theory. But I did the whole fucking class on Halloween because it was on Halloween in the morning as, as Joe Exotic, dude. And I mean, everyone was dying, you know what I mean? But it was like, I kept it up till about the first break, about an hour in, you know what I mean? You know, like I said, I'm, it's like, I was like, oh my God, dude. It was, everyone's like, what in the fuck is happening here, you know?
I mean, Jesus Christ, Craig, an hour long impression? That's, that's, I don't know. I think I've done it once, dog. That's heavy.
Not an impression if you are the person, you know what I mean?
That fits the impression even better because that's his long rambling, you know, it's just speaking for hours on end. No problems. So there you go. Oh, man. I, I just feel good because normally like, I'm, me and Davey do this together and he'll just start the slams on me with something. And then I gotta have something in my back pocket ready to go. And part of like, you know, along with the conversation, we'll do an intro and outro of the podcast and we'll just bust each other's chops for like five minutes. And like, alright, so today's episode and like, we'll just, we'll go back and forth and like, that's another great part of this too, man. Just getting to kind of blow off steam and like, you know, hang out even though you can't hang out.
It's, it's definitely, it's definitely, I definitely use it as partly therapy where like, I've, I've gone into it. I've gone into it a few times, like, ah, I'm not in the fucking mood. And then I fucking do it and I'm like, alright, I'm like, I feel a lot better.
Yeah, no, same here. I'm the opposite.
It's weird.
Yeah. I, I never go into it like angry. I'll just go into it sulky and just like, oh God, like I just, the thought of like, you know, even opening up and being social right now is not anything.
Well, yeah, just sometimes, sometimes you just have a bad day on a podcast day and you're like, damn it, I don't feel like talking. Then you talk and you're like, I feel so much fucking better. I'm so glad we fucking did that.
Absolutely.
So that's a, that's, that's one of the good things about the podcast that I feel.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I enjoy, you know, I, I just enjoy, first of all, you know, me and John have been close friends for a long time. And with, you know, we have our little tight little Corona bubble. Our kids hang out with their kids. We keep it pretty low. But it is nice from the chaos to take a break and just be able to fucking chit chat with your friends because, you know, as a touring musician, as any musician, you know, that camaraderie after shows, before shows, the hang is the fun part. Playing is great, but we all know that being on tour and playing shows, you know, you have hours to fucking kill. And, you know, it's, you know, if you could record the wild shit that like musicians or comedians or all that shit say to each other in the green room, you know what I mean? Like just talking shit, fucking, you know, back and forth or whatever, like it would be probably, we'd all be canceled, I'm sure. You know what I mean?
I mean, just think about, you know, I miss that. So it's nice to be able to do this every week. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I miss, I miss, I miss, like, like I do, I do a certain, I do a different level of touring now. But I miss like when, when I toured with Craig with the fucking Wrath and we would just have those van hangs. We wouldn't even hang out in the green room. We'd drive all day, hang out in the van, get to a venue, be like, fuck yeah. Let's hang out in the van some more. You know what I mean? Like, you know, but I miss that shit. It was fun. So.
So if I can ask you a personal question, John, without, you know, I know what happens in the van stays in the van. So I'm not gonna ask for dirt. But something I learned like with working for different bands, van talk and energy is so different between band to band. So like with the band I worked for, like, you don't have to go into detail necessarily, but like.
No, like, okay. So like, so like, there's, there's some bands, okay, so like there's one band I worked for where same person sits in the front. But never turns around and looks back, always kind of looks forward. And I talk more with the people in the back of the van than I do the person in the front of the van. There's one band I toured with where we don't talk and we don't listen to music. It's not that, there's no contention in the, in the air.
Yeah.
They're just like, this is fucking nice. It's quiet. It's peaceful. You know what I mean? Like, that's all that it is.
Yeah.
There's some bands that, uh, there was a group of Swedes that I toured with and they watched Seinfeld in the back of the van the whole time. Actually, that tour was I drove a Suburban, a brand new Suburban. And that was what we toured in. It was awesome. It was like the most plush touring I've done. As far as like, not really the most plush touring I've done, but it was nice at that point from going from like being cramped in a van to like, dog, I just gotta, I just gotta drive this Suburban and like, it was with like DJs and stuff. So we would just like pull up to the venue and like, we don't have no merch. We don't have no shit. We walk up, they got two sticks, you know?
So.
Oh my Jesus. And then, yeah, yeah. It was crazy though. But you know what? From a tour managing perspective, that's so much easier than dealing with a five member band. Fucking input lists, all this shit, you know what I mean? Stage plots, everything like that, you know what I mean? So.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's all, it's all, everything's different. Everyone's different, you know? The Wrath, when we toured the Wrath, we have the volcano going. And so we have trash bags of fucking weed, fucking smoke happening, you know?
It was chaos, dude. The amount of times we probably should have been arrested, like for the wild, like, you know what I mean? Like, not drunk driving or any of that shit, but we were so fucking high. Like literally, I worked at a, like a head shop when we were touring. So I was, I think Shimer was one of the first people that had like a real volcano, you know? And you guys remember what those are?
Sure.
So it would fill up a bag of weed. And we'd be fucking like on tour and we're just, you know, we're tired and we're bringing California weed across the country. We're fucking ending parties, you know, we, everyone's partying, fucking, we'll smoke your weed. They fucking load that volcano up and people were passing out into the coffee table. You know what I mean? It was fucking crazy, dude.
One morning, we got, one morning we got accused of drugging people with their own weed.
They were mad, like mad at us, dude.
They were like, what was in that shit? Like what was in that? We're like, bro, that was your weed. We just put it in the volcano and smoked it.
There you go.
You know?
Yeah. They had never seen or heard of a vaporizer, you know what I mean? Back then. This is in the mid, early 2000, you know, mid 2000s.
Yeah.
And I mean, dude, remember we got pulled over in Georgia and a fucking cop looked at the volcano. He's like, what the fuck is that? And we're like, it's an asthma machine. And he's like, okay. I mean, like no fucking idea like what it was, you know what I mean?
I love that.
It's like this motherfucker's got straight up asthma, dude. He about to die right now.
Trying to figure out which end goes in his mouth and shit.
Yeah, man.
Oh my God.
Shimer's over here fucking being a street pharmacist all over the country, fucking, you know what I mean? It's like, it was ridiculous, dude. Like, yeah. You know, it was like, it was wild, dude. I mean, for all the Wrath tours that we did and the travel, I mean, remember, dude, the last tour we did, we ended up having to take my van because the other band that we went with, of course their van broke down. Remember the Young Livers tour?
Oh, yeah. Of course. Yeah. Ah, we got the tattoos, dog.
Right, right, right. Yeah, yeah. That's right, my, I got on my leg. Anyway, and the fucking, dude, we had people sitting in lawn chairs, like in the back of the van, like a full entire West Coast tour. And there's not even a seat for them. They're just sitting in lawn chairs, like, you're like, how fucking dangerous is this?
It was me and, it was me and Chris Jordan, the drummer of Young Livers.
Right.
We sat, we sat in two lawn chairs in the back of the van for an entire tour.
Nothing.
I was like. Well, I think that was like, cause like, I remember like, it was like, almost like, it was like, oh shit.
Holy shit, man.
No, John, you can't go. There's no room because something went down with the, you know, the van and shit. I was like, I'm like, oh, fuck no. I am not staying the fuck home.
Let's go.
Dedication, dog. Dedication.
Fucking rad.
I mean, just the amount of things that, you know, we never really got any tickets, never had any major band, you know, van trouble. I mean, never got shit stolen. Well, we did get shit stolen once at, where were we at?
What horrible city was it?
CMJ Festival. We got, our guitar player got his pedals stolen, his whole entire pedalboard.
Albuquerque?
No, but yeah, but that was, that, yeah, that, that show, that was a show at Andrew WK's club, Santos Party House. And at the end of the night was Andrew WK bringing us trays of beer, bringing us trays of beer. We're backstage behind the main stage and Youth of Today was playing on the stage like right outside the door. You know what I mean? Like you open the door and you're like behind the drummer, you know, the fucking stage is going nuts. And we're talking about, and we're talking about Tampa Bay death metal with Andrew WK as he just keeps bringing us fucking trays of beer going like, hey, we need more beer.
He's like, I don't drink. Let us not forget that we smoked Youth of Today completely out of their own band room. We were lighting that motherfucker up. They walked in and they were like, Jesus. And they fucking, they wouldn't even hang out in there. And then they couldn't say shit because Andrew WK's in there smoking weed with us and drinking. And like, what are they gonna say to him? It's his fucking club, you know? We're having a great time and Youth of Today fucking couldn't even use their own band room.
We were.
Good times. Good times.
Oh yeah, dude. Like even the simplest moment sometimes like that you get to do, like I remember just being in Texas in Lubbock, which was the weirdest town I've ever toured, like weirdest town I've ever toured.
Buddy Holly, Buddy Holly glasses.
Yes, the Buddy Holly glasses. There's one part of town where we played and there was three bars connected to each other. And there were cars parked on the street, but nobody around. Everything was closed, but it looked like a Twilight Zone episode where everybody vanished. But like, you know, all their stuff was left behind and it's like, where the fuck are we? And then at the end of the night, there's nobody on the street. And so we're literally, we brought on an acoustic guitar and we're fucking all singing and just yelling and walking down the middle of the street like apocalypse and we owned the place. And I'm like, really? Like, we're just getting to do this right now? It's like, we weren't even doing anything wrong, but it was like, this is fucking awesome. You know, when's the next time you get, yeah, it is, it is. But yeah, dude, it's, you can take that stuff for granted sometimes until you, and sometimes it just happens so fast. You don't even think about it until you look back on like, oh wow, that was some crazy shit that we did.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that happens, that happens a lot.
Yeah, when you're in it, you know what I mean? You don't, you don't realize how weird, I mean, you know, me working in an outside universe, you know, not involved with music at all. You meet so many people that like have never even, I say it all the time, have never been lucky enough to even take a chance on themselves doing something like that. Or, you know, you meet guys that have never been out of the fucking state and they're 55 years old, you know, it's like, and then you have a world of experience in your young twenties and you're, you know, into your thirties and stuff. And it's, it's, you know, when you do, I'm, I've never been like much for looking back as like, you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah.
Guess I'm not real sentimental, you know what I mean? But when you do really look back at it, you, you trip out, man. It's like of all the, even the grimy fucking, we did grimy, grimy. Guess I'm not real sentimental, you know what I mean? But when you do really look back at it, you, you trip out, man. It's like of all the, even the grimy fucking, we did grimy, grimy touring, you know what I mean? And it was some of the funnest fucking times of my entire life, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Dude, uh, I, okay, I think, I remember that tour when, uh, we drove to, we drove to Dallas. And I think it might've been me, but I slept, like we had to drive like twenty hours and like that. And I slept. Under the two seats, like on the, like we're going. And like my feet were basically like where like the engine comes to in a van, you know? And my fucking body was going under the first two benches. And that's where I was sleeping because that was the only room to sleep. We had to drive like twenty fucking hours.
Oh my God.
That's the kind of touring we used to do.
That's gnarly, man.
It was fun.
And it was not cold. You know what I mean? It was hot. I remember that. I mean, I just remember, remember when we broke down in Chicago?
Oh, yeah.
I was wearing, we had no clothes on, like literally like.
Vapor, that's right. That's right. There's gotta be, there's gotta be such.
Yeah. We, our van breaks down on the fucking freeway or right off the freeway.
We were getting.
Pile out of this van and none of us are wearing clothes. Like I'm in my underwear.
Yeah.
Cause it, no AC, you know what I mean? It's the middle of fucking summer in Chicago. It was brutal, dude. And like, and people on the freeway were like. What the fuck is happening here? You know, it's like a bearded tattooed motherfuckers naked on the freeway. I'm popping the hood of the van open, like looking at it like, what the fuck, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah. And it, I mean, it was so hot. We were vapor locking. That's what it was. So the gas was evaporating. In the gas line.
Yeah.
Between the, you know.
For the carburetor.
Yeah.
I'd never heard of it before.
Yeah, we had never heard of it before. And they're like, like, uh, our buddy came and met us. We were like forty minutes outside of Chicago. Like we like hit him up like, oh, save us. And he came and met us and he's like, oh, it's like vapor lock. We're like, what the fuck is a fucking vapor lock, dude? The fuck kind of shit are you guys dealing with out here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh dude, okay. So we were, I was in a van. It was literally a minivan with a four by eight U-Haul trailer on the back. So like not even, you know, full trailer, like, you know, like a, you know, transit van or anything. It was just like super DIY. We're just all packed in this, you know? Like the family's going on vacation, right? We're, we're driving through the petrified forest in Arizona. And we had done like a walk around on the van, like at the last gas stop, like an hour prior. And we were just taking this route to get to the gig that was in, um. Not Scottsdale, what's the Flagstaff? And so we're driving through there and we're going down a hill and we feel this rumbling and the trailer becomes. Undetached from the van and slams into the back of the van. And we're all like, what the fuck? Cause we thought we just got like hit by a car or something. We're all okay. The van's fine, but like we lost the pin to the trailer, like the cotter pin holding it together rattled out on the road. And then the pin rattled out and nobody had an extra pin. And then we were like, you know, what are we gonna do? So we were literally. Looking on the side of the road for a needle and a fucking haystack in the weeds. And we're like, we had just enough time to make it to the gig, load in and then like. Barely sound check and start playing. And we were like, what the fuck are we gonna do? Out of nowhere, this guy in a huge lifted bro truck is driving along, stops and he goes, what's wrong? And like, oh, we lost our pin. Stops, gets out without a moment's notice, pulls his out of the back of his truck and goes, here you go. We're like, are you sure? And he's like, yeah, they cost like two bucks at Home Depot. Turned around, got back in his truck and drove away. We're like, thanks. And he just didn't turn around and was like, yep. And then kept driving. It was like a guardian, it was like a bro guardian.
Like nah.
And, and, and we barely, when we like hauled ass to the gig, got the trailer reattached and we just barely made it in time to start. And like shit like that happens and you just wonder like, how the fuck did we get out of that? How the fuck did we get out of that?
Oh yeah. I've, uh, I've, uh, like, uh, I've had to fucking like repair. Bus, like, uh, fucking flat bus tires at like six in the morning or find a way to get it done.
Yeah.
You know, like, holy shit. Like, like basically like I wake up whenever the bus stops. You know what I mean? Cause I'll always be like, why the fuck are we stopping? You know what I mean? Like if, it's like, we, we have our time, we have our stops mapped out. You know what I mean? This whole thing is mapped out. You know what I mean? Like, so, uh, fucking, I'd wake up to that and be like, oh shit, oh my God, it's seven in the morning. On the outskirts of San Francisco, we're gonna fucking find somewhere, you know, I called a spot, I like found spots, I called it, I'm like. I'm gonna limp a bus to you and you're gonna lift it up and just put my spare on. And they're like, alright, yeah, cool. I'm like, fuck, holy shit. Like that shit saved it. I've had like, I mean, like shit like that goes wrong all the time and you just gotta go into action. That's one of the things, that's a, that's a big thing of adapt or die. You know what I mean? Like, you don't fucking sit around and go like, shit, why is this happening?
Yeah.
It's happening. Let's fucking go, you know?
If, if you're wondering why Flag hires John to tour manage or off or strung out, that is why.
Yeah.
You know, that's what you gotta do. So, but yeah, but, uh, but the podcast, we have fun doing it. We enjoy it. What did you say? I'd say so.
I say so.
We, uh, we, we, when do we release? We release every Wednesday?
Yeah, we do every Wednesday. We just, so we do weekly. You know what? Consistency is a killer for all podcasts. I mean, you know, you have to. Put something out every week, but.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's just been, it's been good, man. I mean, you know, I, I, it's a, it's a labor of love for me and, you know, I know John, you know, likes it and it's, it's all good, but. What made you guy, I mean, I know we talked about why you guys started doing it, but how do you, are you guys both in the AV? Is that where you guys both are?
Oh, yeah.
And you only release audio? You guys don't do video at all?
No, we do, we do video as well. Um.
Oh, you do video? Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're on YouTube and then, uh, we're on Spotify and Google Podcasts. And I think we're trying to get on Apple right now, but it's kind of a hassle. So we're, but we're working on it. Um, but yeah, it's, um.
Yeah. It's a pain in the ass to set it up.
Yeah.
It is.
But, um, I don't know, man, just speaking for myself, and I'm pretty sure I could speak for, you know, Max and Davey too. I, we're all having fun with it and. It's something where we were all friends going into this. We've known each other for years and. And the cool thing about me and Davey is as much as we're friends, we've got sort of the opposite points of view on things. So where I might be more, you know, whatever it is, just like. We're, we're equally friends, but we can respectfully disagree on like just different music things or like, even if it's as simple as like a movie or a band, like, oh, I love that. And he's like, really? It's like, oh, I can't stand that. But like, it's not a bickering thing. It's just like, you get these two different points of view, but it's cool to like. You know, ping pong that off of each other. And also too, like he'll come up with questions for a guest that I wouldn't even think to come up with. And I'm like, oh, great. Like, you know, and it just. It's been fun, man. I've been, I've been having a blast.
Yeah, yeah.
So Dave, what, what's your, uh, obviously, um, you know, uh, Jesse's a massive, uh, stained and system of a down fan. Uh, what, what's your background, dude? What do you, do you doom or what? What's going on with that beard?
Beard was just something that kind of I, I randomly started doing. I've always been a facial hair guy. But it wasn't until, I'm thirty-nine now and I think I was about thirty-five when I could finally grow the mustache. I was very excited about that. Unlike you, Craig, I have not had strong beard my whole life. So once it happened, I said, I'm gonna fucking ride this out. But weirdly enough. Mostly my look, like the long hair I have now is kind of inspired by my son. He's eleven. And he's on the autism spectrum and he does everything a certain way. And since he was like three, he let us, he like spelled it out in blocks. He's like long hair. Like he can't talk, but he wanted us to know like, I wanna grow my hair, motherfucker. So, um, basically I'm just his twin. That's the whole point about the beard and the hair thing. So he's, he's starting to get a little peach fuzz right now too. It's fucking hilarious. I'm like, oh shit, we can't wait till we're grooming the baby beard and shit.
Dude, my, 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 my fourteen year old, my fourteen year old, he has a, he has a mustache and it's fucking.
Isn't it wild, dog? It's so wild.
Hilarious. Oh my God.
Shit me the fuck out.
We make fun of him. Oh my God.
Oh, yeah.
Dude, one time, and like the, he, he cracked up one time when I'm like, dude, I'm like, yo, you got a ball fro yet? And he's like, like, we're on ball fro. Oh my God. Dude, you wanna know the funniest thing? The, the, the best thing I did in quarantine was I showed my kid Team America World Police.
Oh, man.
Oh my God. He laughed for forty-five minutes straight. Like literally, like I had never seen, and it's like, it's so great to see your kid just. Be that excited about. It's a really, really filthy humor.
Right. Well, you always wonder the ju- my, the younger generation, it's like, they don't seem to have a fucking sense of humor anymore, you know what I mean? So when you do get. You connect on something with like that, you know, and you get them fucking, they just know how ridiculous it is, you know? It's like, it's so good, man, but.
Yeah.
What, uh, Dave, what, what's your musical background? What do you, what stuff are you into?
It's a long, extensive random list. Uh, I moved out here to AV when I was like eleven, twelve. And after a while I started playing in metal bands and stuff. And growing up, I practiced mostly guitar and bass. I played a little everything, but those were the two I played. And eventually I ended up getting interested in classical guitar. So I went to school for that. Uh, and I mostly ended up playing bass a lot. Uh, I got good at bass and I started getting calls for gigs. And, uh, so I've been, I've been everywhere. Uh, I don't tour like these guys on the original tip. I've been a cover monkey for most of my career. I write my original tunes and I dream of one day hitting the road. Um, and that's pretty much me in a nutshell. I play everything. I like everything. Uh, I used to, used to rap. I don't rap now. Yeah.
Yeah. Davey's a hip hop head for sure.
Yeah, way into it. Much like Shimer. I'm very much into that.
I'm a huge hip hop fan, dude. There's some weird correlation between metalheads and punks and hip hop. I don't know. I mean, I guess you just, I. I don't know. I don't, I think, you know, but when you talk, think about the average human, it's like, most people are, you know, I'm, I'm a pretty massive hip hop fan. I know. John is, you know, but, um, I've always liked it. I mean, you know, but I grew up in the nineties and, you know, or the late eighties and it, it was so big at the time, you know, you can't tell me that fucking.
I mean, it's fucking huge right, it's huge right now.
Isn't gonna fucking get you going, you know?
It's just, it's juice, it's juice world. And oh, that's it was Pofu. Pofu?
Pofu? Is that the name?
Yeah.
You may have stumped me on that one.
What'd you call me?
I fuck with the young kids shit, but Pofu is like, it's all some new shit.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
What a fun fucking name though. That, that's rap, rap name should get into that. Pofu and like Baby Bop and all that good shit.
Yeah.
Yeah. I still can't, I mean, I listen to everything, but Run the Jewels is still my favorite right now.
Run the Jewels is sick. Oh, it's spelled cooler than I thought.
Okay.
Powfu.
Powfu!
Powfu, maybe it's powfu, yeah.
Powfu?
Alright, I'm, I'm gonna check that out.
Check it out, dude. My kid is, I mean, look, it has eight hundred and forty-one million listens.
That's what I'm always, I'm always so shocked with that stuff. My kid told me something in the mall. This has a billion downloads. Like, what the fuck? You know, and I've never heard of it in my life. The kid's like, yeah, duh, duh. And you're like, okay.
That was one of my, that's one of my, that's one of my favorite games to play on the road. Uh, when we're, when we're driving, when we're driving in a van or a bus, we just fucking. Uh, someone sits there and just goes through Spotify accounts and goes, how many followers do you think this band has? And we all sit around and guess. And we all sit around and guess. And then like, it fucking causes a cra- it causes great conversation. You know what I mean? Cause you're like, oh, here's fucking this band. Oh, that band, three thousand followers, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. You're like, what the fuck?
No fucking way.
No fucking way.
You know?
Yeah.
And like, yeah, yeah. No, it's great. It's great.
Yeah. No, I, I feel that same way too, because I'll just be, you know, searching Spotify or like whatever, just looking for new music. And then I'll find something I haven't heard of just on a playlist or a radio station. I'm like, oh, this is rad. And then I'm like, this must be some brand new thing that just came out. Like, no, they've been around for like five, six, seven years and they have like a million followers. And you're the first, you know, you thought you were the first person to find out about this.
I'm always late to the shit that I think I'm new to these days. That's one thing that's happened the last five years. So I'm just like, oh, oh, have y'all been out since twenty thirteen? Oh, okay, cool.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you, I just, you blew my mind just now and it's today, but fuck it. Alright, cool. I, I like that they have a back catalog I can fuck with, but.
Yeah, it's just so nice. You know, there's so much music, man. There's so much fucking music, you know, it's.
Yeah.
You know, when I look at like my kids' playlists on YouTube, the songs they're listening to and it's, most of it, it's about video games or whatever, but. I mean, it's just, you know, they, the gatekeepers are fucking gone, dude. You know what I mean? There's no. You know, a- anyone can figure it out at this point and anyone can get, you know, millions of millions of downloads without the assistance of fucking. Any big wig in a suit, you know, it's, it's just, it's cool. I think it's pretty cool.
Uh, do any of you guys listen to Soft?
No one's got time to, uh, no one's got time to fucking, you know, nay say what the kids are doing. Cause you're an idiot. You're missing it, you know?
Yeah. No, I, I feel you on that. Do, do you guys listen to Softkill? Have you heard of, uh, yeah, exactly.
Softkill?
Yeah, out of Portland.
I believe I do.
Heard of it, but I haven't heard of it.
No, I believe I, I, uh, again, like nowadays with how you listen to music, like you're like, I'm pretty sure I do listen to that shit, but.
Yeah.
You know?
Exactly.
There's so many bands where you're just like, soft kill.
Yeah. Well, we, we had, um, the guitarist, uh, singer is a buddy of mine, uh, Tobias, and we had him on like the fifth episode and his.
Okay, they're, they're Portland, right?
Yeah. And they're, they're kind of, um, post punky, gothy, but like melodic and like they blend of a bunch of different sounds.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's like dark wave.
Yeah, dark wave kinda stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, that stuff is so popular right now.
Yeah. And those, that, you know, his whole band, it's, you know, the way they've done it is pretty much doing it on their own, building their own following. And they charted on Billboard and they self-released their record last year. And it was like, it was like, yeah, it was like one hundred or like, like. Little above like one hundred on like the all album charts and like pretty high up on the alternative stuff, but they're just releasing the stuff themselves and. It's just awesome because I feel like so many bands could take a page out of that and like, oh yeah, we don't need some huge big wig to validate what we're doing. We can go out there and do it and. You know, we can be successful and have like, you know, ten thousand people love your band intensely instead of like trying to become. Some like rock star uber fam necessarily.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, when you really are a musician, you understand that, you know, you can be as talented as any other motherfucker in the world. But, you know, if you're not gonna be Mastodon, you know what I mean? Like, you're just not gonna be Mastodon. It's not gonna happen. You know what I mean? Like.
It's a lot harder. It's a lot harder to make it.
Time to tell myself I'm Mastodon. You telling me I'm Mastodon?
It's a lot, it's, it's definitely a lot harder to make it than the fucking shit nowadays.
Can you even imagine like that level of success these days? It seems like it's just, I don't know, will, will like the music, that we, we play and that we listen to, will it ever get to that level, you think, again?
Um, yes, because there's gonna be a huge resurgence because there's been such a dry, I mean. People are going fucking crazy. And once everything is fucking given back, I think it's, I mean, it's gonna be a whole new model. And who knows what that model's gonna be?
True.
You know what I mean? Like we have, there's absolutely no real way to honestly go like, it's gonna be like this.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, at this point I agree with you.
We're coming from.
Project like.
There's no, uh, there's like, uh, there's, there's no framework anymore. You know what I mean? Everything's been completely obliterated. There's a skeleton framework that, you know, people are gonna go back to, but it's like. It's hard, man. It's gonna be hard. Fucking who the fuck's gonna go back to work and shows in two and a half, in a year and a half? You know what I mean? Like, you, you're, you have to, you have to go on with something and that's sad to think of, you know? Like, you know, what bands are gonna wanna get back together after not playing for two and a half years and get door deals, you know?
Right. I don't know, man.
Not saying, you know, I mean, that's just the reality of it. Like, a, a smart promoter isn't going to put up fucking big money. Because you don't really have to. Or because there's no, you know what I mean? Like it's not, again, it's not, it's just gonna be completely destroyed. You know, that's my best way of saying it without sounding redundant. You know, it's completely destroyed. It's gonna get rebuilt. Who the fuck knows what that is, you know? And I'm friends with, I'm friends with the dudes at Mastodon, dudes at Tool. And, you know, they're fucking doing, uh, they're just. Sitting back and waiting. No one knows, you know?
Right. And that's, it's the crazy part because, you know, with, with me, I've, you know, with some bands I work for and other people that I've made contacts with, it's. You know, bands that, you know, are friends of ours that I've known in the valley my whole life to like. Rock star people that it's like you've gotten to know just through connections and being involved in the scene. And everybody's in the same boat. Everybody's just a person, you know? When you get to, you know that, John, it's like, you know, it's some, occasionally I'll see you post pictures of who you're hanging out with and it's like, holy shit, but you don't think of it that way. That's your buddy, you know? You're looking at it from a human perspective and everybody, no matter who it is, is just sitting back and waiting going like, when is this gonna, you know, happen? And some people are in better positions to ride it out than others, but you know, if you love what you do, you know, you still wanna get back out there and do it. If, if.
Yeah.
If playing's in your blood, that's gonna drive you nuts. Doesn't matter, you know, what your situation is.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna wanna play, but it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a who the fuck knows what it's gonna look like. You know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly.
Two, a, a month ago, I would have thought that things would have been a little bit more together, but then look what happened in the world this fucking week. Like who? Who gives a fuck about any of this other bullshit? You know what I mean? Like.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's sometimes where it's like, you know, like it's, it, it, some, sometimes shit's bigger that needs like. Not necessarily you're like, you have to like rise to something, but it needs your attention.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That's outside of this little world we live in.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, our music bubble where it's just like, it's not, it's not that you're supposed to do anything, but you should be aware of it. You know what I mean? And it's like, and it's like where like a month ago, I was. I was starting to get a hold of like numbskull people being like, being like, hey, you know, like we should maybe start like. Talking soon. You know what I mean? Like, just kind of like, see where everyone's at. See where.
Coming back. Is anyone coming back?
Exactly, like, where's everyone at in life? Because honestly, like, like why the, like. Uh, I mean, like we're, we're all connected through the proverbial Instagram and Facebook. But I haven't really talked to a ton of these people, you know what I mean? I got, we all have our own lives going on, you know what I mean? Like. It's not that I'm fucking, you know, but anyways, like. A month ago, I was like, okay, I should, I should reach out to people and like just kind of be like, let's, let's maybe have a meeting soon. And then like I did that and it was like, yeah, yeah, cool. Let's talk. And then like a bunch of life shit happened and it was like, well, fuck it. This shit ain't happening anytime soon.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like.
Yeah.
Why do I even need to like, I'm not trying to waste anyone's time or trying to feel like our time's being wasted, you know?
Yeah.
Bro, I wonder if, like, you know, obviously with Corona being so bad and all that, but I wonder if like, all. All this political turmoil and all this, you know, the true change that's really happening throughout our country would have been nearly as major if. Corona wasn't around, you know what I mean? Like, it's like a weird rare opportunity where everyone had to stop for a fucking minute and think like. What's hap- like what's happening here? You know, like this is bullshit, like whatever's going on, you know, whatever you lean politically. I mean, if you lean. Towards Trump, go fuck yourself. I don't know. But, you know, I, but in general, you know, I, I'm always on the outskirts of, I'm disgusted by all of you. But you know, like with the political outcry for George Floyd and all that, like, I wonder, man, like, is this like a weird? Like glitch in the matriots where we had to sit back and really look at ourselves and deal with. Our bullshit, you know what I mean? And I think it's like been a weird, cool opportunity to, to really take on some bigger. Issues than what is in our world is making music, you know, trying to fucking do your own little thing or whatever, you know, it's. It's been kinda, it's been, it's been interesting, you know?
It been, well, basically like all distractions have been taken away.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
And you, and you have to, we have to focus on this shit now and. People gotta put their attention towards something, I guess.
Well, think, yeah, no, think about the forces of distraction there in life, right? You have shows, so you have concerts or events, you know, whether you're watching them on TV. You are, uh, going to them in person. So that's sports, anything like that. There's theme parks if you wanna go do that, cause like, we're right around the corner from fucking Six Flags, so you can't do that every day. But like you could plan a trip to go do that.
Yes, you can, motherfucker.
Yeah, well, you could hop a fence. Yeah, you could hop a fence right now, but you know.
I mean, not right now, but.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying. Season pass, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Season passes.
Right.
I had, I had season pass.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's that, there's movie theaters. That was like, I did that on the regular because I was working a lot, like me and my music buddies, like we would. You know, plan a like, hey, you know, everybody wanna go see this new whatever movie? Yeah, let's go do it. And we would hang out, like it'd be a couple hours of. Distraction and even work, like work was a huge, like if I had crazy shit going on in my personal life. Oh, just put more time into gigging and focus on that and. I, I feel like whatever you were using to distract yourself, just most of it vanished and you were, uh, Dave Chappelle put this great. He said. You know, you're left with your choices, you know, do you like your house? Do you like your life? Do you like the relationships that you have? And it's like, you're forced to think about. Everything in your life and the decisions that led you to this point and are you happy with that or not happy with it? If you're not happy with it, for whatever reason, it's, it's a lot to deal with, you know, for, for anybody and.
There's no better time to change it than right now, you know what I mean? Like.
A full reset can happen.
Yeah, well.
What do you think that entails? What is a full reset in general?
Well, I mean, you can, you can, you can, you can do that, whatever you feel like. Whatever, whatever a full reset is that you want to and take on. A full reset could be just, uh, the people that are, that you hang out with on the daily and some people you probably didn't wanna hang out with on the regular. That were in your life that are now gone and you don't have to go back to that. You can force, force, force new habits onto yourself.
Yep.
You know, going for a walk every day. You know what I mean? You never used to do it before, but you fucking do it now because you have the time, you know what I mean? Like, you could fucking change your entire life. You could fucking, you know, there's, uh, you know, you can't.
I mean, it's just, it's just for me, it's just about, we've had a rare opportunity to take a real inventory on ourselves. People personally, you know, all that shit.
How important is it to hang out with who?
If you've been, if you've been doing this nine months and you, and you haven't sat for a minute to take a real inventory into yourself and see like, man, like. This world's fucked. I mean, you know, like, what the fuck, you know, what is, what am I doing? You know, like if you haven't done it, then you're, you're fucked up, dude. I mean, you, you still have time, cause we're gonna be shut down for another fucking half a year at least, but. You know, it's, I just think it's like, it's so ignorant for people to not really like, just take a true inventory and it sounds dumb, but. Like a part of the reason I shaved my beard is because my identity has been bearded fucking dude for twenty plus years, you know what I mean? Like. And I started thinking like, dude, like, you know, who, who am I? And yeah, sure, I, as soon as I shaved my beard off. I, I really like didn't know who I was for a minute.
He regretted it.
It was weird, dude, like I'm having, you know, and, and it's just so dumb, like it's, it's a simple thing, but. You know, attachment to anything for twenty plus years, but my identity has always been the bearded guy in Ventura. I mean, as long as. You can remember, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I just started thinking like, who the fuck am I, dude? Like, I'm a father of three. I fucking have a job. I do these things that I love, like. What is the one thing that I can change about myself right now that will force me to get into another frame of mind? And that was, that was the one thing. It was like, fuck it, dude, fuck this thing, you know, like. I'll grow it back, but you know, I wanted to lose, I'm, I'm, I wanna lose weight and I wanna make sure, I wanna see my face skinny before, you know, so it's like. Inventory, taking, setting goals for yourself, I think over this year, you know, obviously try not to get sick and all that, you know, but.
Right.
Um, I don't know, I, it's just been, it's been a, we're as fucked up as it's been. It's been an interesting, probably the most growth I've ever experienced. You know, that I can remember without being completely forced into figuring it out, you know what I mean?
I could, I could definitely say I've had to, I've had to look into myself a lot more than I would have in any kind of a normal year.
Yeah.
Sure.
You know?
More introspection, would you say?
Yeah, more introspection, not so much, uh, kinda pushing things away and dealing and dealing with it and the. In the, you know, just kind of like being so busy that you can kind of deflect shit, you know?
Oh, yeah.
You're a speeding train and things are trying to come at you and you're like, I'm going too fast for that later.
Yeah.
You know?
Catch up next round, motherfucker.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, no, and that was, that was me really, you know, getting out of that for the first half of quarantine was really just, you know. Feeling like I was going that way for years of just, you know. Alright, go, go, go. You gotta, you gotta work more. You gotta do more gigs. You gotta do this. You gotta do that. When all that goes away, you, you do ask those questions like, who are you? And then you, you start to think about all the ways that you were going about things and it's like, oh, I was just kind of like. Basically a glutton of life. I was just kind of like, you know, just speeding through every day instead of just appreciating it and. Not necessarily taking it for granted, but just like you get used to like doing stuff at such a pa- like fast pace sometimes.
Yeah.
And just taking the time to like, doesn't matter how busy you are, you can enjoy, like, take the time to like. And plus like I knew people that passed away too for, you know, whatever reason, whether it was COVID related or not, or had. Really good friends that had relatives pass away. So it's like, hey, fucking like, if someone pops in your head, just send a text and say, hey, you're fucking rad. And then like just do it. And I've been doing that and I feel a lot better than when I was just in my own bubble thinking my shit was like. You know, oh, I gotta, I gotta do this, cause it's so important. It's like, you can take thirty seconds just to say, hey, what's up, man? Like, miss you, you.
Yeah, hey, what's up, man? Hope we can, hope we can get a fucking coffee together sometime, you know what I mean?
Yeah, or like, hey, like, you know, like, give me a call for like ten minutes. I wanna hear how you're doing, like. Like that, it seems like you don't have time for it, but all this has shown me that, no, you do. You just have to like plan things out accordingly.
Gotta take the time, gotta take the time.
Yeah. Speaking of taking the time and making a commitment, um, starting a restaurant is a huge commitment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm a big fan of hard segues like that.
No, yeah, yeah, for sure. I was gonna, I was gonna bring it up here. I was gonna bring it up here anyway. I was gonna be like, yeah, here we go.
Dude, I mean, we've been talking about adapt or die this whole episode. You're, you're starting a business, man, and that is, that's no easy feat.
Restaurant, a restaurant.
Fuck it, dude. It's like you said.
A vegan punk restaurant.
Yeah, yeah, dude, that is like, first of all, it's a rad concept, but the fact that you're, you're doing it and you've got like. You know, a solid fan base of people already that are excited for it is fucking rad, man.
No, yeah, it's, uh, it's cool, um, it's, uh, we got an opportunity, um. Basically like we've been wanting to do this. I tour a lot. Uh, Craig, you wanna hang out for fatty vegan talk or you good, you good? You good to hang? Alright, cool. I just wanna make sure. I wanna make sure.
I'm tired of fucking hearing about it. I'll tell you that right now.
I mean, I'm already tired.
Shut the fuck up, I know. But, uh, so, uh, I've, I've always, I'm always like wanting to do shit like this and like I travel. I go to cool places. I go to cool vegan restaurants. I come back to Ventura. There's fucking nothing here. You know what I mean? There's nothing, there's no. Like, okay, as of today, there's one vegan restaurant between. Thousand Oaks and Santa Barbara.
Right.
There's one and it just went vegan like three weeks ago. Um, there's just, and there's also just like no place to hang out and we've always dreamt of doing this. And we got given an opportunity that was too good to pass up. Uh, and we kind of just went with it, like, we could have found all kinds of reasons to not spend this money on this venture. But we decided that this was the best chance we were gonna get and we would make it work. So, we're opening it up. Uh, we got the keys to the place, October like fifth. And we opened up January twentieth.
Excellent.
It's an old, uh, it's an old hot dog, uh, German bratwurst place.
Is this the place behind the Big Lots?
Yeah, yeah.
Fuck yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know why, but when you're like, is the place behind the Big Lots? I was listening to the podcast. I was like, I'm fucking stoked. I can't wait. I can't wait. Behind the Big Lots and see it there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that'll be it, yeah. Yeah, so it's the old beer brat's place. Um, and we, uh, we got given this opportunity and we're doing it. Uh, it's scary as hell, I guess.
Worse.
But.
A hundred percent vegan, John?
Yeah.
How long you been vegan?
Uh, I've been vegan vegetarian for like nineteen years.
Why are you still vegan all the time? I used to be both, but not now. But why are you still vegan? Just so everyone knows.
Uh, uh, well, because of bands like Os Rotten and Punk Rock and fucking doing it for the animals.
Yeah.
So, that's why I do it. Yeah, yeah, that's why I do it. I don't do it.
Goddamn meat eaters that watch this podcast, you guys.
I don't do it. I, I don't do it for, uh, health reasons. I do it for the goddamn.
Clearly.
I like to be a little fucking chunky, you know?
Hey.
But, uh, but yeah, um, so yeah, yeah. I don't know where I was going with that, but.
Nuts.
Tell us about the food.
Oh, so, uh, we're gonna have like vegan versions of like the Philly chee- like a Philly cheesesteak. Have, uh, like an Italian, Italian, Italian sandwich. Um, actually I got, I got brought, I got given this since we've been sitting here. This is our, this is our Reuben.
That's my favorite sandwich ever.
Yeah, it looks like a sauerkraut fucking.
That's what I want.
You're not gonna finish all that, right? You're gonna leave me somewhere.
Actually, I don't know if you guys know this, but John has eaten on every single podcast we've ever done. It's like, I don't know.
I muted, I muted though when I'm eating.
Notice.
I muted when I'm chewing. I'm that busy. I'm that busy, okay?
I was watching it on the Zoom and I was like, that's, that scans. It's like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect anything less.
So, uh, so, but we're gonna have like, uh, uh, and then everything is kinda named after in homage to punk shit, like, uh.
Oh, that's cool.
Like, uh, the Philly cheesesteak is the Stalag thirteen, which is a band from Oxnard and also a venue in Philadelphia. Hence why it can be the Philly cheesesteak.
Yeah, old punk venue.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, uh, the Ruby, the Reuben, yeah, we haven't, we haven't released that yet, but that's gonna be called the Reuben Soho. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, we have, uh. Yeah, yeah, we have, uh, exactly. It's like, oh, we gotta do that. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, our Italian sausage is gonna be a beat on the brat. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, another, another, another hot dog thing called I Wanna Be Your Dog.
Oh, dude, yes.
Regardless of what's on it, I'm really, I'm just.
Yeah, so, uh, so it's pretty cool. We, uh, we've completely renovated the whole space. Uh, it looked like a fucking mental hospital inside, just white walls, white ceiling.
I love white walls.
It was fucking crazy, so we painted it, got Jason Cruise from Strung Out, putting up a, uh, putting up a little. Art piece inside of it for us.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna have vegan beer milkshakes. It's gonna be a party. Now we got leopard print floor. I don't know. It's gonna be a party. Well, come out, come hang out.
Milkshake is vegan and then you pour beer into it?
Uh, so like basically like you use beer instead of milk.
Oh. Goddamn, I'm on board for that.
The beer is vegan too, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All of it's, all of it's vegan. Everything, everything inside the restaurant's vegan.
Yeah.
Dude, that sounds exciting as fuck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's gonna be pretty fun. Uh, I mean, we've got pretty good buzz. I guess you would say the word the kids say.
Yeah.
Kids don't say that.
Actually, that's what, that's what, that's what us boomers say.
I get corrected constantly on things that I'm not supposed to say.
Right on.
So, but yeah, yeah, it's cool. Yeah, it's, uh, it's interesting, cause like we're, we're just opening for takeout right now, but.
Well, there's a lot of people I know that are still doing the takeout thing right now, you know, just because it's, it's safer and it's also like, people don't wanna see their favorite. You know, anything go under, especially restaurants. So I know, I know a good number of people that are still supporting places, you know? Maybe like once a week or like, you know, when they, you know, don't feel like cooking, they'll go get something and, yeah, dude, it's like, it's. Going to a place like that is way better than just going through a fucking drive-through and like just throwing your money at corporate food, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, I'm, I've had my eyes open to, I'm not a vegan or vegetarian by any stretch, but. I went, I was doing a weekend run with some friends and we were just playing like bar gigs and having fun. And one of the guys in the group was a vegan and he was like, hey, anybody wanna go to a vegan restaurant and eat? And everybody was like, no? And they all like, you know, wandered off and I was like, I'll join you, man. Fuck it. I've never had vegan food before. It's really good. Like when it's done well, it's really good. Like good food is good food.
It's like, it's exactly, it's really not that, it's like, it's like anything, anything, anything made good is good.
Yeah, yeah, and so, I, I would hope that like people in the punk scene that. Aren't open to that or like, you know, were curious about it or haven't done it before, or people who are just into music, because. Looking at the way the inside of the restaurant looks, man, that's a music hangout, even if you're not like a diehard. As you put it on one of your podcasts, it's a vegan punk restaurant and it's a vegan punk hangout and you don't have to be a vegan or punk to hang out. And I was like, perfect. Fucking perfect.
I mean, that's the truth and, uh, it's, uh, it's cool. And then, uh, all of us, uh, me, my wife. And Sean Kingsbury are, are owners. So my wife Candace.
That's awesome.
On Kingsbury, who's, uh, from the Antelope Valley as well. He is the chef.
Oh, dude.
And, uh, so he's gonna be the one handling all that. And we're, we're going and doing it together and, uh, we hope it, we hope it works out. You know what I mean? Like we liked that, we wanna have, our idea is to eventually have events there. You know, we got a huge parking lot. We wanna do car shows. We wanna have fucking skate nights. You know what I mean? Like, we wanna just have it be like, you know, I always want everything to be a very community based.
Yeah.
You know, it's no fun doing it by myself.
Fuck no.
You know what I mean? Like I hate doing shit by myself. I always wanna do shit with people. You know what I mean? Like what's the fun of like, doing something, I've done shit, yeah, nah, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah. No, man, the, the food looks good and the restaurant looks good and I think.
Yeah.
The one thing about, the one thing about. Yeah, the one thing about the punk community is I think that especially when, you know, one of, I won't say one of, you know, like one of. You know, your own starts it and you wanna support it. And that was like, I got to see that with doing sound at your shows and like. You know, kinda getting thrown into that world and going like, oh, there's a lot of people here that care as. you know, kinda getting thrown into that world and going like, oh, there's a lot of people here that care. As much as there's disagreements and weirdness, people really care and they look, have their, each other's back. And I, I think that you guys have, you know, a good, I have a good feeling about it, man. I think it's.
Yeah, thanks, man. Appreciate it. We'll definitely have to have you guys out. We'll, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to have you guys out.
Yeah, absolutely.
More cross promotion.
Yeah, that'll be fun. Yeah. Fatty fucking vegan. Fatty vegan is actually the official sponsor of the Get Heavy Podcast.
Oh, man.
Fuck yeah.
So we, uh, we, so we have our first sponsor and I admit.
Hell, yeah, dude. That's awesome.
I'd actually, yeah.
That's DIY.
Yeah, dude, that's be your own sponsor. That's very DIY.
Yeah.
Adapt or die, motherfucker.
Adapt or die, motherfuckers.
Jesus.
Adapt or die. So yeah, but we open, uh, January twentieth. You can follow us on, uh, Instagram and Facebook at Fatty Vegan eight oh five.
Fatty Vegan eight oh five.
Uh, we have, we own the website. We haven't done anything with it, but it's fattyvegan805.com.
Awesome.
Hmm, must be getting serious. You went and bought a donate, a domain?
Dude, we bought, we bought that domain two years ago because this actually all started, this actually all started because we wanted, we've been wanting to do this. And my wife took a business class. And the business class was basically she had to, she was gonna learn how to put together a full business proposal. You know, so that's what she did with the business class. So she did that and we did it with this fatty vegan. We came up with the whole company. We did this whole thing and we were like, well, we got this for what we wanna use. And for whatever reason, uh, we didn't do it then. But we were like, oh, we got this, all this work already socked away. Like we know what we, we'd expect. You know what I mean? Like, uh, a business model, put together a whole business model.
Of it ready, yeah.
Got the bones of it ready. So when this opportunity came up, we were like, fuck it, let's do it. Sean doesn't have a, you know, Sean's job got ravaged from COVID. My job got ravaged from COVID. Fucking Candace's, my wife's job got ravaged from COVID. So let's open a fucking business. Tight.
Yeah.
That's real Americans right there, peeps.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Not to get all weird and gooey, but.
No, no, no. Yeah. And also don't forget that QAnon is real. Okay. Thank you, everybody. And I'm out.
Nice to see you guys. Trump twenty twenty.
Trump twenty twenty. We got him, Craig. We got him. Trump twenty twenty, baby.
Sorry.
Thank you, heavy boys. God, it's, god damn it.
We've been infiltrated.
I don't know if you guys know this, but Hillary Clinton eats babies. Oh.
I saw the video.
When you do Alex Jones, you gotta, you gotta get low and deep in your voice and you gotta start throwing your hands up so you get the.
Oh dude, did you see the video of Alex Jones that I posted, uh, to nature?
Oh, God.
We talked about, dude, Alex Jones denouncing QAnon. It's the best video I've ever seen in my life, dude.
Oh, man.
It's like, I'm tired of the wizards and the warlocks. You guys are fucking idiots. He's just screaming on the fucking. Like, oh my God, it's too much for him, huh? Wow.
Oh, my God.
So, yeah, well, cool, man. Well, I think, I think that, I think that was pretty good.
Yeah, we can't, we can't top that.
Clearly, we need to get out.
Well, so much for getting canceled, huh?
Yeah. Oh, we almost made it. Um, no, seriously, thank you both so much for coming on here and with our first swap cast, like this is awesome. So, yeah. You guys are the real deal and we'd love to have you back on one of these days and, you know, get to talk more music and life and crazy tour stories and more Shimerisms. I had a few written down that I wanted to go over, but we'll save those for next time.
Dude, we could do, we could do volume two, man. We could do volume two anytime. Let me know.
I'd love it. I'd love it, man. Cool. Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, bro.
Thanks, guys.